Please, City Clerk.
Item 6B, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Three-Year Contract with Hindler Leiter, Diamas, and Associates for Business License Administration.
We will now hear from the Finance Director. Director Sun, please. I was going to give you your full name and all that, but I thought, well, let's just go there. Okay? But we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and then Councilmember Chen Yusheng, Finance Director. Today, I'm going to make a presentation for the Business License Administration. The objective of the presentation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year contract with HDL and Associates for Business License Administration. Our agenda will cover some background, and I will explain to the council why should the city select HDL, and then we'll also provide information on fee proposals and the fiscal impacts to the city, staff recommendation, and in the end, I'll hand the presentation over to HDL staff and for them to explain their business model and then their software package. The background, this is the background. The city requires a business doing, in the city, to obtain proper business license and pay business license tax set forth in the municipal code. Currently, we process about 2,500 business licenses a year, and in this fiscal year, we have collected almost $1.9 million in business license fee impact so far. Finance departments are very limited in staffing resources. We can only assign about one and a half FTEs to manage business license. Staff not only cover business license administration, they also need to cover some other duties in the Financial Services Division. San Bruno, as a city, has experienced some technology limitation. Therefore, our coordination among some departments, including Finance, Community Economic Development, and Fire Departments are not at the optimal level. Our consultants, management partners, recommended to the city staff to outsource business license administration, so they solicited business license proposals on behalf of the city, and they received two proposals from consultants. One is from HDL, and the other one is from Municipal Services. Staff discussed those proposals internally, and we favor HDL's proposal. And why do we want to select HDL? HDL provides robust solutions for municipal business license management and compliance. Many of the neighboring cities, including San Mateo and Belmont, have outsourced their business license administration to HDL and then achieved positive results. With the agreement with HDL, we, as a city, hope to reduce some internal costs, improve efficiency, and increase citywide revenues. HDL's business license administrative software will hopefully help us to improve coordination with the business and then the city departments. The software will provide external business a user-friendly interface, allow them to submit applications for business license online, and then pay their business license tax online as well. Internal staff will be able to review comments and then business license submittals electronically, and we will also be able to track our progress online as well. Of course, HDL will rely on the business, will rely on the software to do their management and administration. Fee-wise, the city will compensate HDL in a number of methods. Business License Administration will be paid at $15 per account per year and will annually increase that the CPI level. HDL will also compensate it for their compliance services, meaning business license tax discovery, business license tax audit, and collection of delinquent accounts. These services will be compensated as a percentage of collected revenues from 20% to 35%. The baseline contract will cost by the city $37,500 annually, but with this contract, the Finance Department will be able to reduce half a net FTE and create a saving for the city for about $28,000. So, net cost increase for the city and for the baseline contract is less than $10,000. For a three-year contract, the total cost will be a little bit over $112,000. Any additional contract, any additional cost of the contract will be contingent upon additional revenue collected, and compensation to HDL will be netted against collected revenues. And so, there will be no expenditure budgeted for this contract. With that, staff recommend adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year contract with HDL Associates for Business License Administration. This ends my part of the presentation. Next, I will hand over the presentation to HDL staff, Josh Davis is with us.
Melissa, can you bring?
If we can bring.
Yeah, I'm having some technical difficulties bringing him in. I'm trying right now.
Thank you.
It's just taking forever, it seems like. I think it's working now, hopefully. Josh, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
All right. Thank you, guys, very much. Okay. Do... Apologies here, just wanted to make sure I can see the PowerPoint. Okay, there it is. I think someone, whoever's controlling can advance that for me, just, I guess, to the end of the slide there. I'm only able to see a small portion of it. Well, we can, I can, I can get going, I think, if we, if we want to, if we want to get started. So, again, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Ken you said, we are currently looking at the administration of the business tax program. We at HDL are currently, right now, serving about 400 local governments across the United States, primarily, I'm sorry, in California, but also across the United States. We were founded in 1983, and we are the largest sort of holder of a tax database outside of the state of California's tax departments. And in line with that as well, we are the sort of largest provider of tax and business administration in the state of California. And most of all, these programs that we're offering currently, that we're talking about right now with regards to business license, are, again, being done by a lot of the neighboring cities, but we're also doing some of these services for the city currently now with regards to TOT and the transit occupancy tax, as well as the business license discovery and audit services. We're 100% employee-owned company, and all of our, you know, employees, for the most part, have sort of walked in your shoes. So, these are programs that were developed by finance directors, city managers, council members, and the like, as members of our program. We have a pretty large Bay Area presence. Most of our clients in the area, including, as mentioned previously, Belmont and San Mateo, were doing similar services and administering the tax on behalf of the city. What we're really looking to propose are city-specific operations. So, what we want to do is take the city's current business license program and truly expand on it, customize it to meet the city's unique needs. Every city is different. Your tax codes are different, the population, the business community is different. So, we're really looking to develop some city-specific operations, working with sort of our team of experts, monitoring the legislation in California, keeping up to date, and really trying to develop a program that works directly with the city together, including some other departments. So, we have a proven record of service and growth. As was mentioned earlier, typically, most of these costs will ultimately be recovered by the city. Over 85% of our clients actually see net positive returns, so no expenses paid to HDL over the course of a contract. We're pretty confident that that will likely be the case in this situation as well. We also offer a reinstatement guarantee. So, basically, during the implementation of this, we're going to be setting up and configuring online functionality and support for the business community, dedicated phone lines, email chat, and other support methods. All of those systems and processes, at some point in time in the future, if the city ever decides to bring that back in-house, or thinks that there's some benefit or value of performing the functions internally some point in the future, those all get transferred to the city at no additional charge. So, you gain the benefit of all of the development and the services that we're, that we're putting forward. Quick sort of example of just the neighboring cities sort of landing page, this kind of got cut off here a little bit, but we're going to be managing sort of the welcome and landing page for the, for the business community. We'll make available downloaded forms, all of the information, quick FAQs, and sort of a jumping-off point for businesses to sort of understand what they need to do when they're going to open within the city. That functionality extends to all of these basic features here, so businesses can apply online, they can renew their annual certificates online, pay any balance due, they can submit a closure, and we also offer a public search portal, so to get information out for the information that is public and available. Anybody in the community can go online, look up information, business listings, address information, and things like that that are made public. During that business license process, again, we're going to be handling sort of all the new business licenses. We're reviewing and processing each of those ones, doing classification checks and corrections, validating state and other licenses, and most importantly here, which was touched on briefly earlier by the Finance Director, is interdepartmental approvals and notifications. So, what we're looking to do is communicate directly with Community Development, Fire, and other departments in the city that really could benefit from a streamlined approach to helping the business community get through all of the approval processes all at once. So, we have an electronic approvals process that we'll be able to set up with these other departments as well to help streamline that, and hopefully make it easy on the business community. While the online functionality is there, we also provide phone support and email and, as again, live chat, and so there's a lot of different ways to help the community, but ultimately, the goal is that they can do most of this stuff from the comfort of their home. So, that includes, again, as this last item here, our compliance programs, which we're currently doing now, are going to get rolled into this as well, which is our discovery, audit, and collections program, which is just ensuring that the city is receiving all the tax revenues that it is supposed to be receiving from, from the business tax. To kind of further dive into the, you know, interdepartment cooperation, while we'll have some minimal sort of city footprint and dependencies, some of our staff will be taking on what we call sort of our new business concierge to help walk new businesses through and expedite their approvals. We provide dedicated support and communication, not just to the business community, but to you and to those other departments, and use that sort of web-based reporting and tracking tool to help facilitate that. And finally, monitoring compliance with state legislation. There's been a number of state legislations that's come down over the last three to five years that have impacted the city's abilities and processes to register business licenses, and in many ways, interacting with community development and other planning approvals. And so, we're taking care of monitoring that, adjusting the systems and processes, and making sure that the city's in compliance with all of those as well. Quick access as well for city staff and any of the city management there. We have a reporting portal. The next page will kind of give a demonstration of just a dashboard, gives the city a quick look into sort of the activities, transaction sums, how many new accounts are processed. We distribute lists and reporting all-inclusive as a part of the program, so any information that's necessary. Many times, we provide lists of new businesses, for an example, to the city or to council about who's opening, who's closing, and all that activity is available at no additional charge and included in our service. It can also be access in real-time on our reporting portal in a variety of different methods, whether that's in a formalized report or downloadable Excel files. And again, here, just sort of a copy of access to some of the types of reports and the things that are available on the reporting portal. And that's it for us in terms of our presentation. Thank you, guys, very much, you know, for the opportunity, and we're certainly, Ken, and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Ms. Sun. If we could stop sharing the screen, please? And if there's any members of the public that would like to speak on this item, I would ask that you, if you could, please raise your virtual hand at this time, and then I'll turn it to the colleagues for questions. Councilmember Hamilton.
So, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I support this resolution. The city has had some longstanding staffing issues that can cause delays for new businesses to complete all the processes that are needed to open here in San Bruno, and this action is going to make key parts of that process much more efficient in a fiscally proven way, which will help our businesses and help us some of our staffing challenges. And the system generates metrics, which is, we've identified as one of our strategic priorities. So, I'm supportive of this. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason, please.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is in regards to the slide that, the 2,500 active businesses. I may have missed this, but the $1.9 million in fees, are those fees currently received or that we could receive if we were with this company and, you know, we got into a process of actually collecting the fees every year and following up?
This $1.9 million is the actual revenue received this fiscal year as of the end of March.
And is, what's the potential then for fees received by going in this direction?
I know you were going to ask the question. Unfortunately, I don't have enough data to do the assessment, because that all depends on the additional revenue. HDL will be able to help us to collect, meaning if they can identify businesses, they are not in compliance with the city code, so they fail to register with the city as a business, as a business operating, or, you know, through their audit, we hope they will find some, if the, hopefully, all businesses are honest, but there's some businesses maybe underreporting their annual grocery receipts, and if that, in that case, we'll be collecting additional revenues as well. And then also, there are some collection services, we may be able to get a little bit more revenue. So, it is hard for me to project at this time how much additional revenue we're going to get, but through my conversation with HDL, I know, I was informed that many other cities have saw, have seen their revenue in business license tax increase with their service. So, hopefully, we'll experience similarly in this matter.
And who's going to be the contract administrator? Will this fall into your department? Who's going to be making sure that the contract is being adhered to?
Yes, the contract administrator will be me and the Financial Service Manager, so we'll be back up, back each other up, and the staff will be doing reconciliation for, and as a contract compliance, make sure everything is done in according to the agreement.
Okay, great. And then one, one more question. When I was reading the packet, it triggered the short-term rentals, and I apologize for not sending it sooner, but it may be City Manager Brogan that will have to respond, but this is from the August 25th short-term rental ordinance, and it does say that STRs would be required to obtain a valid city-issued business license annually. So, is this one more step towards really starting to collect those license fees, maybe TOT in the future for these short-term rentals? Because we, I feel like we've been waiting for this to be implemented for a while now.
Separate action, but you're absolutely right. A short-term rental post does have to have a business license, as well as pay the fee once we set up the full regulatory framework and work with the platform so they can collect directly and remit directly to the city. But you're absolutely right, someone with a short-term rental will be able to, like any other business, go onto our website and be essentially redirected to the HCL platform to pay their business license.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So, I'm also in support of taking this action. You know, I think we've struggled as an organization in a few areas, and I think it is important for an organization to understand where its core competencies are and where it's lacking, and I think taking this step clearly will move us closer to providing a better service to the public, and clearly, the benefit of bringing in the technology that we've struggled to bring in, as Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, you know, the council is interested in looking at, at metrics, data, the ability to collect that data and present that data. And, you know, I'm a big fan of the tax updates we get from HDL currently on the sales tax, and so, it's always a nicely formatted document that we get, very concise, very informative. So, I know that HDL will be able to provide us with some good information that we can use for our decisions. So, definitely appreciate that. A question I have for staff, in terms of the .5 FTE that's identified, is that a position or a portion of a position then that will be redeployed to something else? Is it an unfilled position currently? How is that realized?
That is a still position right now. We have temporary help to come into help with the Business License Administration and then some other duties within the Financial Services Division. So, we do have a staff there through a temporary arrangement. So, she comes and works about 16 hours a week. So, once the HDL contract is in operation, we will eliminate that half a position within Finance Department.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of this being a three-year contract, I don't anticipate that it wouldn't go well, but if after the first year, we decide that this is not something we want to pursue, are we committed to three years off the bat, or is there some provision that would allow us to reduce the term of that contract?
Yeah, there are provisions in the, in the contract language to provide, to provide the city a way to exit the contract if we decide that's not the way we want to go.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Director Sun. I'm a little apprehensive. You know, this is, it's good hearing a little bit more information on this current position, which is, which is a part-time for half, and then there's a full-time. And that, that comes to my question, like, so how we're, how we're doing this today? I jumped on the, our city website, fill out a bunch of forms, and you got to turn them in, but maybe, maybe you can kind of help me understand how this is happening today for people to start businesses? And we'll start with that question first. How about that?
Sure. Yeah, staff are doing their best to manage the business license administration. So, a person, you know, a business owner will come in to apply for business license, we work out the paperwork, and then direct them to, to community and economic, Community Economic Development Department and Fire Department to get the zoning planning review and a fire inspection. And then, once all, all is being done, and I will be able to collect business tax when the, when the, when the business are submitted their receipts. Annually, we issue business license renewal notice somewhere sometime in May, and then reminding the business owners that they're renew their business license, and then they'll, by doing that, they will have to pay their business tax to the city. So, that's just a very brief review of how it's going down. But in, in the process, our, the, currently, the community, the zoning and planning review and the fire inspection, there, there is a breakdown in the, in the coordination part, and then we're hoping with HDL's participation in this business license administration, they will help us to coordinate in the process of, in the zoning and planning review. In my staff report, I mentioned, because of the, the coordination is broken down, some of the businesses may have to delay their, their, the launch of their business. So, in the end, so their grocery receipts for the year will be reduced, and then the city will receive a little less tax than we will hope. So, that with HDL, we're hoping to reverse that situation or help us improve to make our service more efficient to our customers and to the communities of the city of San Bruno.
Thank you for that. And management partners became involved as, help me, help refresh my memory on how that became about, that they actually looked at this and provided a recommendation, and in this recommendation, are there other recommendations that they worked on?
So, Javon Brogan, City Manager, why don't I answer that question? So, the City Council, where we call, our prior Finance Director left to take a position at another agency. In the interim, we really needed to move forward with projects that the Finance Director was, was managing, as well as bringing in, there's no consultant support to help our existing staff. And so, that person, Jim Steele, who was the former Finance Director for the city of South San Francisco, working now as a consultant, was able to come in and provide temporary support. Subsequently, as a city manager, I asked Jim Steele to engage in a few different efforts. One was to take a organizational, to undertake an organizational review of the Finance Department. That work is nearing completion and will be provided to the city. As a part of his interim support, one of the deficiencies that he picked upon that we knew of was our business tax administration. And so, one of the good things about someone that is helping you out in the interim, they can actually move forward because they're not encumbered with all of the day-to-day work. And so, I asked him to undertake an effort to identify ways that we can, can improve. The recommendation was to look at outsourcing the administration of business license, of our business license tax, to leverage both the technology and the horsepower of companies that do this day in and day out for cities up and down California. And so, that is a way to both leverage our dollars, because we funded a part-time FTE just to help us clear some of the backlog and do a little bit better. And so, for $10,000 more than that half-time cost, we can outsource this function and leverage that existing FTE to support other areas of the Finance Department. So, it's really solving a business tax problem, but leveraging our staff to improve our other finance functions. And it is taking advantage of technology that now we do not have to buy and implement within our organization, and immediately, we are now serving our customers how they want to be served. Currently, I would call our process a hybrid manual process, where while you can download the form online, you have to email it in. And so, it's not a true online, it's not a true online process, and then we then print all those forms out and essentially do a manual process, as well as our annual mailings are very manual intensive, and this will take us out of that line of business where we can concentrate on the other finance functions and provide best-in-class services to our businesses.
Got it. So, the, I'm sorry, let me go back to the presentation on the fees. 35%, that's kind of the going rate for discovery and audits and delinquent accounts, 20%. That, that's kind of what, what they're able to charge, I suppose. It seems, for first glance, it seems a little high, but maybe you can help me understand that, that in comparison with HDL and the other company, that's kind of the going rate. that in comparison with HDL and the other company, that's kind of the going rate?
Yeah. The percentage rate on compliance services for, from two proposals there are similar. There are not much of a difference between the compliance services. And then we were able to negotiate down the collection service a little bit because standard fee, I think, HDL charged for the collection service was 25%. Now we were negotiating down a little bit to 20%. So these are just on occurrence. So once the, so for instance, if a business is not in compliance and they do not register HDL discover it, for that, for that time, whatever the tax they collect, they take a 35% cut. But once the business is registered with the city in the database on an ongoing basis that we were not going to be charged for the 35% of the revenue, it will be going through the regular account management, and they will be paying, we will be paying $15 a count annually for that.
And let me piggyback upon that answer because it's worth being mindful of our cost structure here. And so it would be 35% of the business tax that's collected. Worth noticing, worth noting that most of our businesses pay a tax of $150 or less. Whereas our financial cost structure, if we were to employ an employee to do this work, this work that we're currently not able to do now because we don't have the staffing, at a professional level, at minimum, we're looking at an employee with a salary of approximately $60,000. You toss on our benefit load to that, we're closer to an all-in cost of $100,000 a year to do this work. And so while at a 35% recovery rate for the, what they were covering initially, may saying, oh, 35% is a lot. When you compare that to the cost structure of us employing additional bodies to do that work, there's quite a bit of savings there.
During the presentation from HDL, they mentioned like a chat version. So what I've heard is, one complaint that I heard about starting a business in San Bruno is, well, you come in, you give them a form, and then you kind of wait. So is this kind of like a little bit more assistance provided to, a little bit of hand-holding through the chat format? And since, maybe you could answer that part of it? Like what additional service is being provided through the chat?
I can certainly take that. So I mean, our goal is to expose the community to as many levels of service as we can. So if they want to, or comfortable reaching out by phone, then that's, then we certainly have that available. Our call center staffed with, you know, our tax specialist has typically under a 30-second wait time for answering. So that gets us through people to walk them through the processes, take their payments. We can actually take applications right on the phone. So if people don't want to fill out something online or want to do something, they can do that on the phone. We can process emails, they can go online and do everything over the web. Or as you mentioned, they can use chat to communicate with us, begin the process, ask questions or status updates in terms of where their application may be at in the process or routing. And so the goal really is to just open up as many lines of communication as possible to keep that information flowing. For the most part, they will get all of that sort of communication via email and updates. So as it gets routed, for an example, from the community development over to fire, they would get a notification, okay, your planning has been approved, we're waiting for fire inspection, or so on.
Great. Does your database include the zoning for a specific property? Like, so if somebody said, hey, I see, I see that this property at 535 San Mateo Avenue is for lease, and is there anything covered with, hey, what kind of business could I put there?
We do not have currently the zoning data in this program. However, many of our clients use the public search portal that we talked about, and this is part of one of the tools that we offer to the other departments to facilitate zoning approvals, is anyone can look up the historical record of businesses that address. So if you're just a member of the public and wanted to come and say, hey, I'm looking at the property on El Camino and I want to see what's there, you'd be able to look and say, oh, historically, it's always been a dentist. Maybe I can't, you know, open, you know, an automotive shop there, or something similar. Now, that doesn't mean you still can't, we would still help route you through planning, but there is some kind of key indicators there. If you can tell that you're trying to open a retail business and the last 20 businesses have been a retail business, odds are you're probably going to have an easy time at an approval.
Got it. My last question is, I went to the city of Belmont's website and saw that you, your site there, pretty slick, pretty quick, and you do process short-term rental fees. And I know that's something that we've been trying to get, that's already been approved. And I guess, I guess the city manager would negotiate that for something potentially in the future, but it was nice to see that that's already set up.
Yeah, absolutely. We support sort of really the collection of any, you know, sort of local taxes. As we mentioned before, we've helped the city with the transient occupancy tax. We certainly, short-term rentals is really pretty close to the same thing. It's kind of a combination of a permit or a business license and the TOT, because both of those things are required. And certainly, we have the capability to easily add that on, not only to process those returns, but also to find, similar to the word discovery process for business license, where we find the businesses that aren't registered, we also have the ability to identify the short-term rentals that are listing on these websites like Airbnb and HomeAway, identify who they are down to the parcel, and then get them through the permitting, registration, and tax payment process.
Okay, one last question, sorry, one last question and one last comment. How quickly would this contract be started? Is it pretty much flipping a switch and by next month or a certain date, when does it take effect? And the last comment that I have, I do appreciate that there's metrics built into the software.
If I may, the contract, if the council authorizes, approves, adopt the resolution, and then the city manager will be able to enter contract with HDL. After we enter into the contract, we'll start the implementation stage. My conversation with HDL tells me that the implementation will take up to 60 days. So hopefully, if everything goes smoothly with all the, if the data migration is going to happen as quickly as we hope, then we should be able to implement this new process at the start of next fiscal year.
And if I can piggyback on that, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Medina for his questions and very perceptive. You're absolutely right, HDL does have the ability to administer other taxes. You talked about short-term rental, but they also have a division that administers marijuana taxes for agencies as well. And so we are establishing, should council vote yes, a relationship that we can expand in the future for various other taxes that we would collect.
Those are my comments and questions. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to follow up on the question around the contract administration. I just want to make sure that we're effectively not, we're effectively looking at contracting this out, and the only time staff would be spending on this is really to administer the existing contract or to, you know, or to provide oversight to the contractor. Staff would no longer be involved in the actual operations of the business licensing. Is that right?
Yeah, we're not going to be getting involved in the daily business license processing, business license administration, and then also receiving business license fees and reconciliation for each business license owner. That will be all done by HDL. Staff will only be monitoring the performance of the entire contract, reconciling the revenue received by the city, and then the fees taken by HDL.
All right, thank you.
So, but like we said, the .5 person or staff component is not a permanent employee, an FTE that is a, somebody who's coming in on a 16-hour a week. Also, what happens if we still have members of the community business and otherwise that they still want to walk in? They have a concern, something's not happening in a timely fashion? What are the mechanisms in which they have to ask questions and to receive good quality customer service?
Well, we'll continue providing customer services to people coming to the front desk, and I will, will guide them through the HDL portal to submit their application online. If they need assistance, staff will help to submit online, provide any kind of help that we can. And of course, we'll develop a procedure internally with HDL regarding the new business license application and business license tax middle process.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no members of the public and seeing no more questions from my colleagues, this is an action item that would need a resolution introduced if the council wishes to go forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Hamilton, Salazar, motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.